Are there any further requests for a recess? No. Right, we'll move on to the debate and Deputy Provost will take the remainder of this particular item. Deputy Provost?
Good afternoon, councillors. Can I now invite comments and contributions to the debate, please? Remember, you have only five minutes to speak. Thank you. councillor Drysdale.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Provost. Firstly, I seem to be missing a budget amendment for councillors Purvis and Stewart, so I must assume that their status as an allegedly separate political group is at an end and perhaps that can clarify later. I am however deeply disappointed but not surprised that the Tories are trying to pull the wool over the eyes of voters by presenting old money as new in terms of investment in communities.
Messing up.
To be clear, it is only the SNP group proposing £600,000 of new money to directly assist with local projects to support the pandemic recovery. I am however very interested to note that the Tories and also the independents and Scottish Labour are promoting the possibility of a local area committee for Kinrossshire. And I trust that the intention would be for any such proposal to promote a degree of independence for that area to be put to the people of Kinrossshire in a referendum. Deputy Provost, I am however much more concerned and seriously disappointed that the Tory budget has totally disregarded our collective responsibility as a council to provide services which will promote better health and improved wellbeing for the people of Perth and Kinross as we come out of the pandemic. Conversely, the SNP group will allocate a quarter of a million pounds through Perth and Kinross Health and Social Care Partnership and Live Active Leisure. This massive investment will go towards helping those residents who are socially isolated or who have mental health issues or who suffer from underlying health conditions such as diabetes or arthritis by offering them opportunities for physical exercise which we all know to be so important for wellbeing and more so in a supportive and empathetic environment.
Goodness sake.
So I don't know who said goodness sake there.
Sorry, sorry, it was me councillor Drysdale. I was seeing people making comments but there's so many people doing test, test, test. And I'm looking for comments, so sorry, I wasn't being disrespectful to you in any way.
Okay, thank you. Not only would this major programme hugely benefit those taking part, it would help to reduce the pressures on our wonderful NHS. Deputy Provost, this social prescribing initiative will have a significantly positive effect on those facing the hardest journey out of this pandemic. And I want to stress again that the main aim of the SNP budget is to help families and individuals emerge from this most difficult period. A further proposal to provide financial assistance through grant funding to those renting from private sector landlords who may face difficulties maintaining rental payments and the consequent threat of eviction is testimony to these objectives. At the same time, we are also directing that the housing revenue account devotes sufficient resource to those residents living in council housing for the similar objectives. Our budget, the SNP budget, absolutely prioritizes the people of Perth and Kinross and unashamedly focuses on those facing the hardest journey out of lockdown. And Deputy Provost, I commend the SNP amendment to the chamber.
Thank you very much. Now, I think it might be councillor Rebecca, but I'm not sure because I had all these test ones in between. So I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong.
Thanks Deputy Provost. I will horse on unless told otherwise. So thank you very much. This SNP budget is all about helping families as we find ourselves starting to recover from COVID-19. We all know about the Scottish Government's £100 per year school uniform grant for some pupils, which is very welcome. But in this particular year, we want to do more than that. So we propose an extra £150,000 for families in need that they are able to access, not only for school uniforms necessarily, but for PE kit as well. Additionally, we propose an extra discretionary fund of £250,000 to assist with our young people returning to school in what will be a crucial period of education recovery. The Scottish Government have already, of course, put their money where their mouth is with another £60 million announced yesterday with resources spent on additional staff to help teachers going forward and of course for devices and data packages to assist with home learning. But we need to complement that particular commitment by making sure all bases are covered. And it's imperative we pay particular attention to young learners with additional support needs and to your care experienced. And in that last point, I'm delighted that we have cross-party support for the promise in Perth and Kinross. I also welcome our proposed additional £100,000 to assist the various food poverty projects such as community fridges, which have already tackled food poverty in Perth and Kinross. And I hope members will forgive me for particularly commending the staff and volunteers of Letham For All who have been outstanding during the pandemic. Tackling child poverty has proven to be a difficult nut to crack, but we are making progress and it's imperative that we continue to tackle this most difficult of challenges. And we plan to cut the cost of school lunches down to £2.10 for secondary pupils and £1.95 for primary pupils, which is a decrease of £20 per meal. Over a year for a family with three kids, that's £150 nearly. And it reflects the potential direction of travel. If there's electoral success, of course, for the SNP in May. By then, by August 22, and sorry, I'm fumbling here because I know there was an announcement yesterday as well. The direction of travel means that all lunches and breakfast by August 22 will be free in primary schools. And I know money was announced yesterday, £49.75 million that will allow phased implementation in 21, 22 to support this ambition, which is a big thing. And it's vital that this council reflects that important ambition as soon as possible. I hope the people of Scotland will make that ambitious a reality at the ballot box in May. I will be supporting this SNP budget amendment so we can continue our efforts to getting it right for every child. Thank you Deputy Provost.
Thank you very much councillor Robertson.
Thank you Deputy Provost. I'm delighted to support the Liberal Democrat amendment to the budget. And I'm also very pleased that the contribution that our MSPs have made in the Scottish Parliament in enabling that money to become available to Perth and Kinross council. If I can make one or two comments on the things that are actually in the budgets. I was quite pleased to see the £240k in the independent labour amendment for a ranger service. If there is going to be extra funding for a ranger service, can I ask if that can be done through the countryside trust, Perth and Kinross Countryside Trust? Because we currently have a ranger service there and I think it'd be a shame if we duplicated the services that that organisation already adequately does. The second thing I'd like to say is I was delighted that we found enough money in the budget to support our town and city centre with regard to in the old dam budget with regard to trying to move some businesses away from retail into perhaps other uses. And I recognize that the Conservatives in their budget proposals have recognized that problem. I think we have to expect that the whole aspect of our city and town centres are going to change within the next few years. People, and we have to be able to accommodate that and try and encourage more people to live within the city centre and town centres and perhaps have move away from retail and commercial use because more and more people, I think, as the trends are showing, will be working, if they can, from home. The last thing I'd like to say, and I strongly welcome this, is the investment the Liberal Democrats have identified and so have the Conservatives in the Lockleaven Heritage Trail, which opened, as you know, in 2014 and attracts over 200,000 visitors to Perth and Kinross. It's one of our biggest visitor attractions. The opening of the trail not only just led to a huge increase in the number of people locally walking and cycling, and that's people of all ages, but allowed people with disabilities and using mobility buggies to go into the countryside and enjoy the wonderful aspect of Lockleaven and its both bird life and scenery. And it's led to the growth of many businesses round Lockleaven. So it's not just been a leisure facility, it's actually been a huge economic boost to our area. It's led to a huge investment in RSPB Vane Farm with Underpass, which this council strongly supported. And also large investments in businesses like Lockleaven Zlarda, which is the second biggest employer now in Kinrossshire. This investment of £160,000 shows that this council backs up what it originally put money into and doesn't allow it to fall into disrepair. And it sends a strong message to our funding partners like the Heritage Lottery Fund and to the Gannickie Trust that if they invest money in Perth and Kinross council facilities, that we will maintain them and keep them up to a good standard. So overall, I'm very, very pleased indeed that we have managed to find funding to do it and that many of you and generations to come will be able to enjoy the great benefits that the Heritage Trail has got to offer. So thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Heaton.
Deputy Provost, thank you for the opportunity to speak to our budget motion. This year, we're producing a one-year budget due to the massive uncertainty brought on by COVID. Thankfully, Scotland has seen the benefit of being part of the United Kingdom and has now received its largest budget in the history of devolution. A massive £2.6 billion up on the current year, an increase of 11%, which makes the additional UK contribution to the Scottish Government funding over the last 12 months somewhere in a region of £14 billion. Despite this, we've had to put up with the Scottish Government, which has held on to funds from Westminster, unnecessarily delaying financial support for our businesses, communities and residents. All this at a time when our communities have come together and supported everyone who needs them. Provost, I particularly welcome our proposals for our communities. The last 12 months have been very difficult for everyone, but even more so for those that have struggled even during normal times. Additional pressures were put on them and trying to make their finances stretch was sometimes impossible. So step forward our communities and our community spirit. Food banks, given take boxes, Letham For All and the Merton Community Food Share were just some of the amazing products that rallied together and tirelessly worked to ensure that everyone had enough to get through the hard times. Even during the periods where restrictions started to ease, these projects continued to support our communities. This budget supports these and other valuable community projects which will allow them to continue to work and ensure that no one goes without as we support our communities to recover and rebuild. We're also committed to businesses and we're providing grants for businesses through the business crowdfunding and micro grants amongst other initiatives, all ensuring that we can help businesses get back on their feet. We're also investing in resource to support the review of our ASN network arrangements. This vital services ensures that those who have additional support needs can get to and from school safely. The money we're putting in will support the review as a spend to save initiative. The cost of providing this service has risen significantly over the last five years due to the complexity of individual needs, the need to have arrangements for escorts, as well as various varied timetables, all of which puts extra pressure on the service. This review will look at a number of options to ensure that we can continue to support our additional support needs, children's transport needs and provide the best service we can. Deputy Provost, I fully support our budget motion. Thank you.
Much. Councillor Illingworth.
Great, thank you Deputy Provost. I welcome the Conservative administration budget and there's two specific things I'd like to welcome. Firstly, I'd like to welcome the £35,000 investment in extending the reach of IMS service to include those from less well-off backgrounds who are musically talented. I think kids get an awful lot of confidence and support from these groups, so it's excellent to see that being extended. Secondly, I'd like to welcome the support of £50,000 for community groups who do such an amazing job looking after our local environment. Locally, I can think of the work Abernethy, Brigand Blum and Meathren groups do ensuring our communities look so lovely. We want to make it easier for communities to organize their own litter picks or address any footpaths that have become overgrown. So thank you very much Deputy Provost.
Thank you very much councillor Parrott, followed by councillor Barnacle. Councillor Parrott.
Thank you very much Deputy Provost. This budget comes at a challenging time. Essentially, a hopefully non-recurring pandemic event is having a considerable impact on a recurring budget process. There are more uncertainties than usual and these uncertainties are each more uncertain than before. To misquote Donald Rumsfeld, we have uncertain uncertainties and certain uncertainties and various other sorts too. I want therefore to thank our council finances team for all of their hard work in bringing us so sure-footedly as they have to this budget meeting. It is very noticeable to me that the administration motion and our amendment propose similar amounts of extra expenditure. But I note too that while the emphasis of spending in the administration motion, just over half, is in promoting a prosperous and sustainable and inclusive economy. By contrast, sorry. By contrast, our amendment is focused on supporting people to live independent, healthy and active lives. I do not underestimate the problems facing our economy. And by goodness, there are many more than there needed to be just now due to incompetence at Westminster. But this year of all years, when hopefully we are emerging from the pandemic that has impacted on us so much over the past year, is a year to support our people, their neighbourhoods and our communities. I want to highlight therefore just a couple of measures from our amendment. Firstly, our local community groups have really stepped up to the plate and offered much resilience to our communities. Going forward, these groups, in the spirit of the Perth and Kinross offer, must be encouraged to continue their hard work. And that is why I fully support our proposal to make £600,000 available to our local action partnerships to foster and support groups in their work. Secondly, I know that there is work ongoing through TACTRAN and the local authorities, the local Tayside authorities, to bid for funds from the Scottish Government's £500 million bus partnership fund. But in a council with a large rural area, we need to go further as part of the climate change agenda to solve the rural public transport problems for both residents and tourists. And so I'm delighted that we propose £60,000 to fund initiatives here. I'm delighted also that we propose £100,000 to fund free car parking for electric vehicles and also vehicles that work within the context of a community car sharing or pooling scheme. I urge members to support our budget amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor Barnacle, followed by councillor Braun.
Thanks Deputy Provost. In supporting the independent group's budget amendment, I would like to highlight its three main themes. Firstly, post-COVID-19 lockdown, we felt there was a need to support children, young people and older people, hence the proposals for the youth community golf and tennis, the mental health initiatives, supporting activities for older people, plus the Equalities Fund, which my colleagues outlined earlier. Secondly, members should note capital provisions are funded from revenue by covering the annual cost of borrowing at what are currently record low interest rates. So we are effectively providing a total of £31.75 million of capital funding by this measure. Providing £18 million for a new community campus in Pitt-Lockery. £1 million for a rural tourism infrastructure fund. £3 million for the town centre regeneration fund. £5 million for PH20. £3.5 million for local roads, covering potholes. And actually some flood preventative measures, nobody's mentioned flooding today, which could include ditching and gully cleaning. £250,000 for councillor Robertson's beloved Lockleaven Heritage Trail and £1 million for active travel routes and paths. And the third theme asks members to note that most of our additional expenditure is based on recurring expenditure, not just for one year, in a rolling programme for the future. Finally, I would mention in my ward of Kinrossshire, three items. We have proposed funding for a Kinrossshire area committee of the council as a pilot scheme for devolving power to community level, particularly appropriate for the former county of Kinross, whose area population is now so much greater than it was at reorganization in the 70s. I have been working for this since my first term of office in 1999 and would like to see it come to fruition before I stand down in 2022. The concept is supported by the four local members and the Kinrossshire Forum of CCs, with councillor Purvis and myself having recently pursued a draft scheme with officers and being happy to work further on it to produce an acceptable scheme that initially would not include quasi judicial matters and retains voting rights to council elected members only. Just to put councillor Drysdale's mind at rest, if a pilot scheme comes about, there would be no prospect of Kinrossshire campaigning for independence. The second thing is the Kinross railway feasibility study, which seeks to build on a full council unanimous decision of the 4th of October 17, made at our historic council meeting in Kinross. And the final theme is the regional parks feasibility work on an Oak Hill Hills Park and expansion of the Lowman Hills Park, which is also supported by the Kinrossshire Forum and the local members. I note that the other groups in regards to Kinrossshire, obviously the Liberal Democrats and the administration support the Heritage Trail funding. And I'm particularly pleased that the administration are supporting our local area committee pilot study. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor Braun, followed by councillor Sarwar.
Thank you Deputy Provost. Just over a year ago, we were all working on our respective budget proposals for the then upcoming budget in March 2020. At the time, we were hearing about a flu-like virus spreading around a city in China that probably most of us had never heard of. Within weeks, it was described as an epidemic and a few weeks later, a pandemic. And just a few days after that budget in 2020, the country went into lockdown and PKC invoked emergency powers. Undoubtedly, this has been a year that no one expected to see with a catastrophic effect on people's way of life and on the economy itself. Small and large businesses have suffered and we fear some may never come back. Tragedy has been all around us and has even reached into this elected body. But with the coming of vaccines and the hope of a return to some form of normality, now is the time to look forward. And this administration's budget does just that by putting help for economic recovery as a major priority. Not just for Perth itself, but for our rural towns. A prime example is the Open for Business Fund amounted to £200,000, which is designed to reinvigorate and refresh our high streets by encouraging small businesses to take the opportunity to update their frontage as visitors start to come back and spend. It will also be available as a resource for a city and town empty shop initiative. I know there would be much interest in this within my board. And after all, aren't our small businesses the backbone of the economy? A point I think our SNP colleagues should take on board, given the scarcity of any economic recovery in their motion, it might be worth reminding them that a good economy, without a good economy, everything else is just empty dreams. Provost, the economic fallout of this pandemic is now with us. And it will no doubt be a long, hard climb out of it for all businesses, large or small. And as I have said, some will not come back. However, undoubtedly, the financial help that originated from Westminster has played a significant part in ensuring that as many businesses as possible do come back. With grants, the Self-Employed Income Support Scheme and the ongoing furlough scheme, without which unemployment could well have been so much higher. And we should not forget the £20 bonus on universal credit, which has been of great help to so many and has now thankfully been extended. Members, I'm pleased to be aware, I am in no doubt that my letter sent to the Chancellor played no part in his change of mind and I doubt if anybody would believe me if I said otherwise. It will come as no surprise to some members then when I say that all of this proves without doubt the equal importance of Scotland in this great endeavour we call the United Kingdom, which is now just 300 years young. I am supporting the motion put forward by this administration without reserve. Thank you Deputy Provost.
Thank you very much councillor Sarwar, followed by councillor McEwen.
Thank you Deputy Provost. This week, the world marked International Women's Day. I feel I can't let this budget go by without addressing the rise in domestic abuse and gender-based violence, as well as the many ways women have been disproportionately affected by the coronavirus pandemic. Women have borne the brunt of lockdowns, doing the majority of homeschooling, seeing their careers curtailed, stretching food budgets further and further, and most distressingly, as the victims of domestic abuse. It's important to note that charities responding to gender-based violence saw an eerie decrease in demand during lockdown, but then a spike in calls for help when restrictions ease. We have every reason to believe that there'll be another such spike following the end of current lockdown regulations. Given the seriousness of this issue, I was hopeful when the leader of the council made mention of support in his speech. But given that his actual budget proposals mention only a paltry sum of £20,000, I am left more than disappointed. The SNP budget amendment provides £100,000 between Women's Aid and Razak. I would implore the leader of the council to increase this amount to match the SNP's proposal in an act of bipartisan, inclusive and feminist support. The SNP budget proposal focuses on making the biggest difference for families who are struggling now. We will reduce the cost of school meals, provide funds for school clothing and at a cost of £80,000, make sure no child misses out on swimming lessons. Finally, one of the smallest costs at £40,000 is to me one of the most important and impactful, that being a dedicated public memorial for all those bereaved during the pandemic. A place to remember, to grieve and to collectively heal. Again, we in the SNP are not precious. We want the initiatives that will benefit the people of Perth and Kinross to be carried forward. And I ask the council leader to take this project forward. The SNP budget amendment puts people first and for this reason, I am proud to support it. Thank you.
Very much. Councillor McEwen.
Thank you Deputy Provost. Sorry, excuse me. In the year that has passed, the COVID pandemic has had a devastating effect on our communities in Perth and Kinross. Our council has been under emergency powers, there have been very few service committee meetings and elected members' briefings paint a deteriorating picture of both our service provision and the financial position. I feel it is therefore for us as councillors to support a budget for 2022 which supports our council services and helps those in our community most affected by the pandemic. I was pleased we voted to support council taxpayers last week and accepted 3% funding which allowed the council tax to be frozen. However, it is a regret that the vote to freeze the council tax was not a unanimous one across this chamber. Provost, I will be voting to support the SNP amendment as it strives to support those in our community most adversely affected by the COVID pandemic. Supporting the cost of the school day helps families and improves educational outcomes. Reduction in the cost of school meals in advance of them being free for all primary school children in 2022. school children in twenty twenty-two, school clothing grants, oversubscribed each year will get extra monies, and we'd especially ensure all children can participate in PE, which supports healthy living and mental health fitness. Extra recurring funding for welfare rights to create two extra posts will ensure our constituents will have all the support they need during these tough times of furlough, closed businesses, job losses, universal credit and the threat of eviction. Our well-run HRA account has a tenancy sustainment fund to support our tenants during tough times. The SNP amendment proposes boosting this sustainment fund from the HRA account and in parallel, setting up a similar scheme using the general fund aimed at residents of Perth and Kinross who find themselves on tough times and in need of help to maintain their tenancies. Preventing homelessness is especially important during these economic times and limited options for families. Social prescribing has many benefits as a public health intervention, and extra money for this will help tackle many of the physical and mental health issues constituents have experienced due to lockdown and will help prevent the development of health conditions which make you most susceptible to COVID, like diabetes, obesity and hypertension. This SNP amendment is a budget aimed at supporting or importing council services and those constituents who have had it worst due to lockdown and the COVID pandemic. I think it is a moral obligation as councillors to support such a budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Bailey, followed by councillor Pover.
Thank you, deputy provost. I'm really proud today to stand up for the independent Scottish Labour budget, which is the only one to offer residents a true recovery budget with the environment and equalities at its heart. This is the only budget that recognises the toll that the recent crisis has had on people's mental health. There is funding not only for improvements to mental health support, but also for increased activities for the elderly who've suffered so much from isolation and loneliness during this past year. This is the only budget that secures the future of breakfast clubs in our schools. Yes, the Scottish government might fund them, but we must not make assumptions about the outcome of May's election. This budget gives kids and parents the certainty that Perth and Kinross council is ready to support their breakfast clubs in years to come, regardless of what central government does. I was really surprised that our budget is the only one to provide real tangible support for a new swimming pool in Perth. PH2O does not need another feasibility study, it needs capital funding, and that's why we're putting five million pounds into the bank to support the build. I was shocked after their previous very vocal criticism of the Tories for kicking this project down the road, that the SNP only proposed a measly eighty thousand pounds for the project in today's budget. This budget is the only one to include funding to make the serious structural improvements that our city and town centres need if they're to survive and continue to flourish. There is no doubt that our city and town centres will look very different in the years to come, and this three million pounds of funding will enable us to make sure that ours remain competitive. We need to bring people and especially families back into our city and town centres. What better way than to bring playparks and green spaces back into their centres? This is the only budget that includes funding for a pilot of what I'm sure will be the future of public transport in rural areas. The subsidy model for running local bus services is completely unsustainable, we need to try something new. By enabling the council to become a bus operator, we can deliver a service that meets the need of our residents and not just shareholders. This budget further supports green transport by allocating one million pounds of funding for pedestrian cycleways. In many areas, including here in the Carls, communities are separated from one another by major roads, which are great for cars, but are barriers to all other forms of green transport such as walking, cycling and scooting. Welcome councillor Robertson's support for a range of service, however, there are specific powers that employees of local authorities have that aren't available to charities or private landowners, and that's why we brought forward the proposal in that style. Looking across the other options on the table today, the only other one I find at all appealing as a resident of Perth and Kinross myself is an SNP one. I commend that group for also including items that will make a real difference to those who've struggled through the pandemic. Specifically, the social prescribing will give opportunities for supportive physical activity for people with mental health issues or underlying health conditions. The catch-up on school swimming lesson is also something I commend. However, for the reasons I set out earlier, when it comes down to it, the Labour and Independent Budget is the only one for me. Thank you, deputy provost.
Very much, councillor Bailey, councillor Pover, followed by councillor Duff.
Thank you very much, deputy provost. And following on from previous group member comments, I'm delighted that the SNP continues to support children and families in this budget amendment by prioritising affordable school meal provision, clothing grants, welfare rights, to name a few proposals in this budget. And that's why I am very proud to support this budget amendment. Thank you very much.
Much, thank you. Councillor Duff.
Thank you, deputy provost. It has indeed been a long, hard year since the sixth of March twenty twenty, when we last sat here figuratively speaking and set our revenue budget. Setting a budget is never easy, as we all know, but without the management of the excellent financial team which we are blessed with, it might have been nigh on impossible this year. So firstly, I'd like to commend the work of Stuart Mackenzie, Scott Walker and their team for everything they have achieved financially for this council in the last twelve months. Deputy provost, this is a budget which looks forward to better times and which highlights the key building blocks of that journey, a budget which invests in our children and families, a budget which invests in our economy and businesses, in our communities, in our environment and infrastructure and in our staff. There are many excellent examples of initiatives which will help the children, communities and businesses of Perth and Kinross to recover from this pandemic. Education features very strongly in our budget with investments in our virtual campus and access to qualifications and apprenticeships, both of which will expand the academic and vocational course choice for all our pupils, something which all parents will find very attractive. This will be supplemented by parallel work on a T-Side-wide virtual campus, which could see an even bigger range of subjects being offered across Perth and Kinross, so much to be welcomed there. Last year, we invested in the Highland and Perthshire Learning Partnership, and I was delighted to hear recently about the advances being made in senior phase education in my ward, and I welcome the additional funding to cover transport costs as part of that partnership. Our business economy has taken a severe hit over the twelve months of this pandemic, and I think local businesses will be absolutely shocked at the total lack of investment in our economy within the SNP budget amendment. In stark contrast, I'm sure that all of our local businesses will strongly welcome the one and a half million pounds worth of investment from the Conservatives, aimed at supporting the recovery of our high streets, tourist and visitor attractions, shops, businesses, jobs and workforce. In particular, as a representative of the Highland Ward, where there is a high reliance on tourism, I welcome the quarter of a million pounds investment in promoting Perth and Kinross as a must-visit destination, the campaign to promote local goods and services, and especially the creation of a visitor management fund. This fund will help all of our rural communities to mitigate the excesses which were brought about last year by the influx of visitors to Highland Perthshire. While we are delighted to welcome all visitors to Perth and Kinross, they must act responsibly and with an understanding of the way of life in the countryside, something which was sadly lacking in a large number of those who descended on our area last year. Deputy provost, a record investment in the roads infrastructure this year of fourteen million pounds will, I am sure, be noted and reported by the media and will greatly be greatly welcomed by everyone. I want to see our road services move ahead at top speed to catch up and overtake where the condition of our roads needs to be. With the potholes of the previous winter unable to be properly addressed during twenty twenty due to the pandemic and restrictions imposed on roadworks last year, this has naturally affected present road conditions. I hope that this significant additional investment will speed up repairs and resurfacing now that the better weather is approaching, something we would all support, I am sure. As a former police officer, I am well acquainted with the trauma of domestic violence, and it is acknowledged that the lockdown has resulted in a significant increase in cases of domestic abuse. Violence of this nature is particularly abhorrent, and I'm pleased that additional funds are being made available to support women's aid. Finally, deputy provost, I was privileged to attend the recent staff health and wellbeing seminar, which was an excellent event, and hear about the issues which affect our staff. There can be no doubt that the pandemic has had an effect on the health and wellbeing of all of us, not least on many frontline staff who have had to deal with difficult situations over long periods of time without their usual breaks. I'm delighted, therefore, that we have chosen to invest twenty-five thousand pounds to look after the health and wellbeing of our most precious and valuable asset. Deputy provost, I thoroughly commend this very strong Conservative and Union's budget to members. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Duff, councillor Waters, followed by councillor Gray.
Thank you, deputy provost. COVID nineteen has played havoc with our communities. Sadly, we have lost too many people due to this pandemic, including our friend and colleague Henry Anderson. Add to this the cost to individuals' health through long COVID, mental health issues, along with general wellbeing. As we emerge from this pandemic, it is important that we start preparing for the challenges our communities will face in rebuilding resilience. It was a delight to see how our community groups responded to the needs of the residents throughout the pandemic, in the same way our community groups will also be essential as we emerge from this pandemic. As such, the SNP amendment budget have allocated six hundred thousand pounds to our action partnership, specifically aimed at helping our communities as they emerge from the pandemic. Just as our action partnerships played a key role in supporting groups during the pandemic, so they should play a key role post-COVID, given they understand our local communities best. This money is over and above the six hundred thousand a community investment fund mentioned by councillor Lyle in his speech, which is money that is already allocated. In total, along with the outstanding hundred and forty-three thousand currently available to our action partnerships, this will mean our communities will have access to over one point three million pounds through the SNP amendment budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Gray.
Thank you, deputy provost. I'd like to focus on two particular items on the Scottish National Party's community-focused amendment. This is a budget like no other, which seeks to address not only the shortcomings born by our communities on a normal annual basis, but to also address those which have been caused by abnormal hardship due to the pandemic and its resultant ongoing lockdown. As many will be aware, the Community School of Ochterhalle has a range of sports facilities, including a sports hall with five courts, a gym and a full-sized astroturf floodlit pitch, all allowing active recreation towards the fitness and mental health of the various communities throughout Southallan. These facilities are normally well-used, but like many other such facilities throughout Perth and Kinross, they have been sorely missed during lockdown. However, in Ochterhalle, their facilities have faced a double whammy throughout this time. Unfortunately, in two thousand and nineteen, prior to the onslaught of the COVID pandemic, it became necessary that management of the extensive sports facilities required to be immediately readdressed. A meeting of interested parties within the community was held in the school, and a decision made to seek control of the management of the sports facilities by a local community group formed specifically for this purpose. The Ochterhalle and District Sport Hub Board was duly formed and a SCIO status established. When sports teams were allowed to use the outdoors astroturf pitch prior to Christmas two thousand and twenty, the Sports Hub Board oversaw bookings and managed the floodlighting. The tendering process began in November last year to seek a contractor to manage the onsite daily running of the entire complex of sports facilities once lockdown easing allows. Although funding from Ochterhalle Community Facilities Fund was sought, sadly meantime, due to the uncertainty over time scales and reopening and lack of funding, the selected contractor withdrew. The hub are keen to recommence the process and seek to have all preparations in place to commence the running of the sports complex as soon as allowed. With no secure funds in place, an immediate start-up grant of ten thousand pounds towards this long-awaited unworthy cause would be a most useful aid toward the goal as we nudge toward the end of this volatile pandemic. The second proposal I wish to commend in our amendment is our proposed investment to maintain local roads' infrastructure. Physical connectivity is important to any of our communities are to benefit from centralised facilities. It is therefore essential that our roads, their bridges and culverts are timely maintained. Certainly throughout Southallan, and I know elsewhere, there's a backlog of numerous instances where road infrastructures are in need of attention. A stretch in time would save nine, or rather, a pound now spent on infrastructure maintenance would save many tomorrow on infrastructure collapse. I support and commend our community-focused SNP amendment to council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Gray. Councillor Stuart, followed by councillor Shires.
Thank you, deputy provost. Provost, deputy provost, fellow councillors, I have much pleasure in supporting the administration budget proposals today. These are proposals which strike the right balance between support for our economic and educational recovery from the pandemic, along with investment in the future for our communities, environment and infrastructure. I'll restrict my remarks focusing on a few key elements as I see them. First, back at the full council meeting in December, I accepted that the council had not had the capacity over the last year with all of the restrictions in place to spend a large proportion of the roads' maintenance budget. And I know that with the recent bad weather, the council won't even have managed to spend the full remainder of the ten million pound budget by the end of the financial year. But I did raise the concern that this meant that rural areas might feel left behind. I'm delighted, therefore, to see that the administration are now proposing a four million pound increase on top of the ten million pounds already in the capital budget in what will be the largest ever commitment to fixing and resurfacing our roads, and I look forward to seeing a range of roads' projects progressing, particularly as restrictions come to an end. Secondly, on support for business, I'm delighted to see the two hundred thousand pounds for micro grants to small businesses. In earlier budgets, I was pleased to secure two hundred and thirty-eight thousand pounds over two years for this scheme, and it was the single best-received initiative I've seen, judging by the feedback from the businesses who benefited from it. As we emerge from the pandemic, I think it's right to reinstate this scheme, but with a substantial increase to two hundred thousand pounds over the single year of this budget. That micro grant scheme is only one part of a total of one point three million pounds on economic development that this budget proposes to commit. I'm surprised that the total the SNP proposed to commit to economic development and recovery is the sum total of zero pounds. Thirdly, I'm particularly pleased to see the investment being made in expanding the excellent work of the Care and Wellbeing Cooperative across Perth and Kinross. As councillor Lyle said, this will help to improve equality of access to personal care services and to increase the personalisation of choice for those who need to access these services. And we can also look forward to offering greater choice and support for those who choose to work in this worthwhile and extremely valuable sector, or for those who don't currently but who may be interested in entering the sector in the future. Lastly, the investment in no wrong door style training will make sure that our valued council and alley-oa staff, who are in touch on a daily basis with large numbers of members of the public, will be trained and supported to identify any vulnerable members of the public or people who may be in need, and to point them in the right direction to get the help and support they need without needing to navigate through department after department or agency after agency. The benefits of this should be clear to all. In summary, this budget is the essence of conservatism. Where the public sector needs to step in on large infrastructure projects such as road maintenance, it should be resourced properly to do so. Otherwise, we should seek to help people and communities to help themselves. This is the Perth and Kinross offering in action. It is localism in action, and it is the big society in action. In fact, it is conservatism in action and is the right thing to do, and I will vote glad of heart for councillor Lyle's budget motion today.
Thank you very much, councillor Stuart. Councillor Shires, followed by councillor Jarvis.
Thank you, deputy provost. In supporting the Scottish Conservative budget today, I welcome our investment in supporting the educational recovery of our children and young people. COVID nineteen has been a horrific time for all of us, but none more so than for our younger citizens. They've had their lives turned upside down, many parents suddenly found themselves having to support their children whilst managing their own changed work conditions, and teachers found themselves trying to support their classes whilst working at home. It was a scenario that happened so quickly and which our staffers rapidly responded to. Our message today is that we want to do everything we can to support our children and young people back into learning and school. We want to pay tribute to all of our education and children's services staff for all they've done over the past year. Your contributions have been amazing, and no elected member will forget the service you gave to our children. In the face of the negativity the pandemic has brought though, there have also been opportunities... there have also been opportunities of lessons learned, major advances in embracing digital technology, and a diversity in the range of ways our children can learn both in and out of school. In our budget, we put in place practical measures through community link workers to support families as they readjust to the routines of the school day. We recognise the challenges will be for some, and I know that the expertise of these individuals in giving that practical support will make a real difference to young people. We know from the data gathered during Covid-19 that if you were disadvantaged prior to the pandemic, you are likely to be even more so now. We want to do all we can to support these families and not see anyone left behind. We will also ensure that the promise was not just a document to be filed, but actually becomes embedded practice in the council with investment of funds to implement a new model of family support and funding for care-experienced parents and family support workers. We know the tremendous difference the REACH project has made in the lives of many young people, and I'm confident that this new approach will add to the work across ECS. I've spoken often of our ambition for our young people, and in this budget, we lay out investment of over £270,000 in the future development of the virtual campus and an expansion of choice in both vocational courses and academic subjects. Through this investment, Perth and Kinross will promote the development of this forward-looking way of learning and working with our partners across the Teyside Regional Improvement Collaborative. We will ensure that Perth and Kinross young people have the opportunities they need as they learn. The Highland pasture learning partnership has shown what can be achieved with relatively small sums of money, the dedication of our head teachers and school staff and working with our partners. We'll build on that as we go forward and help our young people have access to more choice. Finally, we recognise that for many children and young people with additional support needs, school can be a very difficult place, and we are supporting the development of our inclusion and ASN teams across all our secondary schools. We're investing in the resources to accelerate this review so that our young people have the best opportunities we can offer, and our schools are supportive as they help these young people be the best that they can be. This budget is one that seeks to support all of our children, young people and their families as we seek to work together to recover from the challenges of the past 12 months and build for the future. If I may add, I am also proud of our investment in the economic recovery. We know that the route out of poverty is education, and from education into employment, our budget delivers on both of these fronts. Thank you, deputy Provost.
Thank you very much, councillor Shires. Councillor Jarvis, followed by councillor Simpson.
Yes, thank you. A number of years ago, there was a massive pools win, and the winner, when asked what she was going to do, said, "Spend, spend, spend." Now, sadly, she discovered that once she had "spent, spent, spent", there was nothing there. Everything had gone. Now, we've gone through a most horrendous year, and people have suffered very, very badly. And we all realise that we do need to support children and families and try and get them back into some sort of semblance of normal. But I'm just quite shocked that all the other groups that take up part of this council don't see the broader picture. Because without businesses that are thriving and new businesses coming in and increasing employment, that we really are going to suffer very, very badly. Because if businesses go down, we lose the non-domestic business rates. And without this thriving economy, there are less jobs, and this means increased poverty for our hard-pressed families. So it's just so typical of the short-sightedness that starts with the Holyrood government, who have a policy that thinking that they throw money at any problem is how to cope with it. They forget that they need to support businesses and the local economies, and this is what is needed to help with the fight against poverty. And this is appalling, this absolute short-sightedness. And it looks as if they're even taking this out into the broader Scottish community, that the upgrading of the A9 is at least going to be delayed. And there is a possibility that it's actually under threat. And this affects the whole of the Scottish economy, not just the people of Perth and Kinross. Under the outlook like that, you know, we really, as a whole country, have a particular problem. We need to support our businesses. The Conservative budget for this council is the only one that supports businesses and tries to increase jobs and provide extra into the economy, help get people out of poverty. So for that reason, I will be supporting the Conservative budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Donaldson, followed by councillor Wilson.
Deputy Provost, thank you. The SNP amendment is not just about the pandemic. It is an amendment to deal with the aftermath of the pandemic. And remember, this budget is for just one year. Later this year, we'll look at the revenue budget on a three-year basis, at the capital budget, and also at the new investment blueprint. That is yet to come. I mean, can then take a longer-term view once we ease out of lockdown. The SNP amendment is one to ensure that we have a rapid response to providing support to local communities and voluntary groups, to ensure that we can bounce back and bounce back quickly. Other key elements is already in place, and that's the council tax freeze. I think that will be a benefit to many residents in Perth and Kinross. And let us recall, despite what the Liberal Democrats stated two weeks ago, that Holyrood and obviously Kate Forbes did have to have some negotiating room with the Lib Dems and with the Greens, council tax is going to be baseline. And in fact, both groups will be voting for a council tax freeze and for the Scottish budget. And I'd also remind councillor Jarvis that the Scottish government is extending non-domestic rates relief for one year. That's a major benefit and help to local business, and it's something that I think you will overlook. I just want to focus on two, three things briefly, and areas that have not been covered by any of the other groups. Flytipping, we're not into photos and posturing. We're into much more practical proposals. We're putting aside £76,000 to deal with the problem and really to provide a real deterrent to flytipping throughout Perth and Kinross. And that indeed includes not just financial penalties, but the proper use of the criminal justice system. No one else has put that forward. Also visitor management capacity, the problems on dirty camping, and that also involves clearly waste and refuse as well. And it's not just one confined to Highland pasture or the areas around Loch Clooney, but also to St Pillens and the south side of Loch Arm. And they had a really tough time last year with antisocial behaviour. We've got to take action on that, and this £50,000 will enhance capacity with the council, and I think that's desirable. And finally, local area partnerships, £600,000. I know councillor Lyle has referred to the £600,000 with the community investment funds. In some ways, it's almost like old wine and new bottles, it seemed to me from what he was saying. But this is different, and it's specifically oriented to a Covid response. It is about real community engagement and community empowerment. It is about giving local communities a say on what is best for their local areas. It also, I think, ties in very strongly with the whole question of the Perth and Kinross offer. I think it links in very strongly indeed. So I commend the SNP amendment. It is realistic. I think it can provide immense benefits to the people of our community. And as I said, on non-domestic rates relief, we certainly have not in any way overlooked the business community. That's myself. Thank you.
Thank you, and my apologies to councillor Simpson. I'm sorry I missed you out. So councillor Simpson, would you like to go next, please?
Thank you very much indeed, deputy Provost. No apology necessary. I don't know how you keep track of things. You have my complete admiration.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you. I can speak for as long as I like now, deputy Provost. Now, so I will be speaking in favour of a Liberal Democrat amendment, one which promotes recovery and doesn't focus on redundancy, much favoured by the independent Labour amendment. I'd like to focus particularly on our proposals to spend £450,000 on investments in local roads and footways. We mention footways as we recognise how important pavements and paths are to the people of Perth and Kinross, and on a raft of new and improved road safety measures. This is no short-term fix, colleagues, but this allows a three-year programme which will employ a technician and a trainee to offer much-needed support to the hard-working team that deals with this at the moment. And finally, I would turn and mention the £50,000 we wish to put into the self-help push-along gritter scheme. Now, I think we'd better all get used to self-help if central governments are going to continue to deprive local authorities of the resources they require. But as regards this, deputy Provost, as you know, I never like to ask people to do something I wouldn't do myself, so I volunteered for one of these push-along gritters, which I found to be very easy and useful to use, a pleasure to deal with officers dealing with it, and it gave me much-needed cardiovascular exercise. Not a pat and a hurdle in the bike, but still very good for me and good for the community. So with that, deputy Provost, I would commend the Liberal Democrat amendment to the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Wilson, followed by councillor James.
Deputy Provost, thank you very much indeed for the opportunity to speak. I want first of all to commend my colleagues in the Scottish Parliament and the Scottish Liberal Democrat Group for punching above their weight as usual and getting major improvements in the Scottish government budget. First of all, to get the council tax freeze baseline was a major achievement. But let's not crow about it too much, deputy Provost. What we've done is we've reduced from a £17 million hit over the next five years to a mere £6 million hit on the taxpayers of Perth and Kinross. I still don't like the council tax freeze, but I accept with warmth the amelioration of that effect it will have on every council taxpayer in Perth and Kinross. The second thing I want to say, deputy Provost, is I'm sorry we haven't had the opportunity to hear from the independent Scottish Labour Group about their rationale about rejecting pressures of some 400K that were in the budget, when the advice from officers was largely to try and accept the pressures that were there if humanly possible. And also, their assertion of additional savings, which includes £600,000 out of the community planning and senior management capacity budgets. And there was no explanation how these things were going to be achieved. And as far as looking at the replacement of Pittlochry High School is concerned, I thought that was a capital project, and deputy Provost would feature more sensibly in discussion on the capital budget. I want to home in on three things in particular. In our own Scottish Liberal Democrat budget, the investment in young people's health and wellbeing. Other people have referred to that, and understandably so. We want £90,000 directly in to help support staff to support these services. If we cannot support our young folk, then I think we're really struggling. There are many sections of society, and many folk have referred to the difficulties we're in. I'm not going to repeat all of that, deputy Provost, but we all acknowledge these. We need to make sure that our young folk are well-supported. We need to make sure our city, our towns and our villages are supported in terms of economic wellbeing and recovery. And we're proposing an initial 250K, at least, to help support that process. Inevitably, there will be a change in all of our retail and other outlets in every case. And this will apply as much to the high street in Perth as it will to a small village or hamlet throughout Perth and Kinross. Particularly important, and I think other folk have spoken about the need to make sure that there is a realistic economic recovery, but that will be made all the better if it's local businesses and local people that are starting to create jobs and helping aid the recovery. And finally, deputy Provost, our 250K proposed investment in digital, social and financial inclusion for everybody. It will match HRA funding that's already there. And it's important to make sure that there are always in society, as you know, deputy Provost, folk who fall between all of the different services. And by only expanding and extending these services and making them more comprehensive and more accessible, will we get to folk who perhaps have been bypassed in the excellent umbrella and safe network that we have within the council at the moment. But we need more investment. We need to make sure that we support our very hard-working staff with resources, and that's an excellent example of it. I commend the Scottish Liberal Democrat amendment to the council, and I will certainly be supporting it fully. Thank you, deputy Provost.
Thank you very much. Councillor James, followed by councillor Purvis.
Thanks very much, deputy Provost. One of the benefits, I suppose, of coming way down the list of councillors who put into comment, it means that most things that you were going to say have probably been said before, so I shall keep this fairly brief. The Council Commission review council finances showed recently that reductions in local government funding over the past seven years have been greater than in any other area of Scottish government budget. Grateful that they're going to fund, you know, the zero increase in council tax this year. However, the money we do get is very prescriptive, so you're limited as to what you can do. We've heard much from our colleagues in the SNP opposition today about how much they're going to help those people most adversely affected to emerge from these difficult times. Not a penny promised for business, and I think that they are probably some of the most adversely affected people of all. They've also been let down by the Scottish government, but that's another story. It's very easy to give away free stuff, you know, free school meals, free buses and everything else. But you need the means to be able to pay for those free things, because nothing is for free. So our Conservative budget, I'm delighted to see, supports business, which gives people the means to be able to go and earn a living. As far as the Conservative budget goes as well, I'm also delighted to see investment in the rural infrastructure fund and the flexibility that will give to meet the needs of rural communities for items like we have suffered this last year with dirty camping and the like. So I will definitely be supporting the Conservative budget, and I commend other people to. Thank you, deputy Provost.
Thank you very much. Councillor James. Councillor Purvis, followed by councillor Forbes.
Thank you, deputy Provost. I'm pleased to be able to speak in support of the motion brought forward by the leader of the council today. And welcome that we've been able to bring forward a budget on behalf of all Conservative councillors across Perth and Kinross. This has clearly been a difficult budget, given the pandemic and the uncertainty around future costs and income streams. And while the decision to freeze the council tax is, of course, very welcome, and something that I've previously advocated in the council chamber, the chronic underfunding of councils by the Scottish government means that budgets remain challenging. I'd like to pick out a few proposals in the Conservative motion in particular. First, and perhaps unsurprisingly, I'd like to welcome the decision to pilot a local decision-making committee for Kinrossshire. Despite being subsumed into Perth and Kinross council a number of decades ago, Kinrossshire has very much retained its local identity. And the possibility of devolution for Kinrossshire is something that's been talked about ever since we lost our separate county status. We recognise that the priorities of people in Kinrossshire may differ from those in Perth or indeed in other parts of Perthshire. And this proposal is an excellent first step towards restoring some of the powers that were lost when Kinrossshire ceased to be a county in its own right and putting Kinrossshire residents back at the heart of local decision-making. I would like to acknowledge that it's something that my ward councillor colleague, councillor Barnacle, has been pushing for since he was elected, and I'm glad that we've been able to secure funding for this pilot today. I also do recognise that some are sceptical about this initiative, and so I'm very grateful that the budget of a majority of councillors has identified this as a priority. We as Conservatives believe in local decision-making and know that local communities are best placed to take the decisions that affect them most. I would gently remind councillor Drysdale that devolution should not stop Edinburgh, or indeed, in this case, at Perth. And I have no doubt that we would win a local referendum on this proposal, which I suppose is more than which I suppose is more than can be said for the SNP's success rate with plebiscits. We in the Scottish Conservatives want power to be closer to the people, not to be hoarded in Edinburgh, and this pilot will do just that. Secondly, I would also like to add my support to the comments of my ward councillor colleagues on the additional funding for the Lochleve Inheritage Trail. This trail is a fantastic tourist attraction and a great draw for local businesses, but it is also much valued by local residents who have made even better use of it during the lockdown. It is essential that it is well-maintained, and while much capital funding has been secured over the years from external sources, it's much more difficult to secure maintenance costs, so it's welcome that the council's stepping in in this case. Thirdly, I want to add my support to the additional investment in the expansion of course choice. We've seen the course choice diminish at secondary school level across Scotland. We in the Conservatives, both locally and nationally, see this as a major priority to ensure that our pupils have access to subjects that they need to get where they want to be in future and at the appropriate subject level. Both through investment to accelerate our virtual campus programme and to provide more academic subjects and additional funding for the expansion of vocational courses, local young people will start to see an increase in the breadth of choice, which I hope is something we could all support. Finally, I want to add to some of the comments made about economic development. I have to say that I was shocked, if unsurprised, by the omission of any funding towards supporting the local economy in the SNP amendment. I think this is quite staggering, given how difficult it's been for local enterprises who have had to contend with multiple enforced shutdowns and the requirement to adapt by moving online or ensuring business premises are COVID-compliant. The investment in our local economy of £1.3 million in the Conservative budget will, I'm sure, be welcomed by many of our hard-working business owners and employees across Perth and Kinross. In particular, I want to welcome a proposal for a skills passport. Many people locally have sadly lost their jobs as a result of the restrictions imposed to combat the pandemic. While there seems to be light at the end of the tunnel as we approach the summer, there is no certainty about what jobs will remain or return. When there are such changes in our economy, the state sometimes has a role to assist people to retrain and rescale so they can take advantage of different employment opportunities. This initiative will give a helping hand to get many local residents back into the workplace. So to conclude, this is a very positive motion brought forward on behalf of all local Conservative councillors that addresses many of the local priorities that have been raised with me by my constituents, and I'm very happy to support it. Thank you, Deputy Provost.
Thank you very much. councillor Forbes, followed by councillor Massey.
Thank you, Deputy Provost. This is a pragmatic budget that's been put together against the backdrop of the worst global circumstances most of us will have experienced in our lifetimes, and certainly circumstances I hope none of us will ever experience again. We focused on key themes that many of my colleagues have spoken of already, but I want to highlight for everyone just a few points I'm particularly pleased about. And these points are based on our real-life experience. These are the issues that come to our door or through our email box on almost a daily basis. We've frozen car parking charges to try and encourage people to return to our high streets when lockdown is lifted, so let's not bash businesses, let's accept the fact that they pay people's wages, put food on their tables and roofs over their heads, let's support them to do this. Our regulatory services, who are literally on the front line of COVID, and I've said this before, Deputy Provost, that their intervention in the Two Sisters Plan in Coopurangus saved Coopurangus from local lockdown last year. They need further investment. Their workload has increased many times over. Just take government legislation they work to. That would normally be updated once or twice per year. They're currently on revision number 15. They visited 1,000 premises over the last year and dealt with an excess of 1,000 calls from public relating to COVID safety issues, on top of all the regular health and safety work they currently perform. And as more of our area is open for business, it's important that the public have confidence that they are safe places to visit. And the simple fact is that that needs further staff, and this investment will provide that. And Deputy Provost, last year I met with an elderly man who'd just lost his wife. We were at the side of his wife's grave. The cemetery was not in the state that he expected it to be, and he was very, very upset. And to see him on a rainy day crying by his wife's grave really brought home to me that budget cuts taken over the last decade or decades or so have gone too far. But the really key point that came out of that meeting was that there were local people nearby who would be keen to look after the cemetery in the same way that Bloom groups look after large parts of our area. And for that reason, we're investing money into this to establish friends of cemeteries. This is for local volunteers who really want to help and make some progress on this issue. We've just come out of one of the worst winters for many years. We blew our winter budget some time ago, yet we still receive complaints from constituents. So for that reason, we're making further investment into winter services, in line with the Perth offer where local residents will be provided with the resources to help themselves. And everyone will be delighted to see an additional £4 million investment in our road network. This makes a total of £14 million from this Conservative administration, the biggest single investment in roads in one year that this council has ever seen. And my very good friend Pete Wishatt recently referred to me as a tarmac Tory. Well, I'm delighted to live up to that name today, as we commit to putting more tarmac on our roads than any administration has done before, and certainly more than anything the SNP are proposing to do. As was outlined by councillor Lyle earlier, we lost almost an entire season of roads maintenance due to Scottish government restrictions through lockdown. Now's the time to try and make up that lost ground, and this investment will help us to achieve that. And thinking of and reflecting on our two colleagues who we've lost to COVID, many people of all parties have talked about memorial, and that's something I definitely support. However, I'm almost absolutely certain that when we're over this, both the UK and the Scottish governments will be making the appropriate arrangements to reflect on the people who've lost to the pandemic. And I propose that when we know what that is, we revisit this proposal and decide together what would be appropriate for Perth and Kinross. And finally, Provost, I can't let this budget pass, as others have, without pointing out that the SNP have set aside a grand total of zero to support business. However, given what I spoke about last time, and I referenced the slow speed of business support in Scotland, I'm sad to say I'm not surprised. And with the Scottish election on the horizon, I suspect the SNP will not be getting much support from within the business community. I'll obviously be supporting the Conservative budget today, Deputy Provost, and I'm glad I will be doing so.
Thank you very much. councillor Massey.
Thank you, Deputy Provost. As noted in the Perth and Kinross early childcare expansion plan report of September 2017, the guiding principles of quality, of flexibility, of accessibility and of affordability will be met by the delivery of 1,140 hours childcare provision. Thank you to the officers for providing me with information I requested this morning. As a new councillor, I have been astonished and pleased to learn of how much money the Scottish government have invested into the 1,140 hours childcare expansion. This will be good for two reasons. Firstly, the education and social opportunities it will bring to the children and the early interventions it will allow. Secondly, it will allow some families to escape from inward poverty. The Scottish National Party's budget amendment today, a budget that is for all the residents of Perth and Kinross, will allow further opportunities for young learners and will support our families as we recover from the COVID pandemic, and I'm delighted to support it.
Thank you very much. Now, I don't see anyone else wishing to make a comment, but this is the last call if anyone has got a comment to make. No? In that case, I'd like to thank you all very much for your comments. The way that you were all respectful for each other was very much appreciated. Before us, I will now ask councillor Lyle to sum up.
Thank you very much, Deputy Provost. And I too would like to thank all elected members who've made contributions today. I have listened intently to the debate, and I am grateful to the heartfelt views of many who've spoken today. Just reflecting on the debate today, I'm pleased to be able to incorporate some of the following items, which hopefully someone will put up on the screen shortly. And we will incorporate these adjustments into the administration's budget motion. We will increase the amount for community gritting. We will increase funding for digital and financial and social inclusion. We are providing funding for voluntary befriending wellbeing and check service, additional funding for support and training for volunteers. We include £240,000 for a pilot of our ranger service. We provide funding for community safety measures in Creif, and within the administration's £4 million for extra for roads infrastructure, we commit £200,000 to road safety measures, including 20 mile sound signs in schools. And this will be funded from the COVID reserve, now for COVID-19 reserve, apologies, from a sum of £815,000. And this will leave more than £2.5 million in this earmarked reserve to support council finances as we navigate our way from COVID. So I'd just again like to commend all members for their contributions today, and I would like to move to end the debate and move to the vote.
Thank you very much, councillor Lyle.
Deputy Provost.
councillor Duff.
Just for the sake of the record, I'm happy to also accept that into our motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Duff. Councillor Lyle, would you like to sum up?
That was my summing up.
That's all you wish to say. That's fine. Thank you very much.
I think I spoke at length this morning, and I think elected members have heard enough of me today, and so we are there. Move on.
councillor Barrett, you have a comment to make?
Thanks very much, Provost. To think in view of the concessions made by councillor Lyle, and the fact that all of our budget motion measures have now been incorporated into their motion, we withdraw our amendment.
Thank you very much, councillor Barrett.
If you require the other councillor, Barrett, to confirm, Deputy Provost?
Well, yes, probably just to make it quite sure it's not just a one-man's talk.
It's not just one-man's talk. I'm happy to second that withdrawal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Liz Barrett. Okay, we can now go to the to vote. So I invite Scott Hendry to the voting process, please.
Thank you, Deputy Provost. Before I start the process, can I just ask if there are any members or officers who are aware of any councillors who are having any connection issues, if they could state that now before we commence the voting process? I'm not aware of any issues, but if anyone is aware, if they could let me know now, thanks. Okay, so we're dealing with report 21 oblique 33 by the head of finance, the revenue budget 2021/22. We have a motion by councillor Lyle, seconded by councillor Reed, which has been circulated to you and is headed up revenue budget motion. However, the motion is now revised and includes the comments that have been incorporated and shared with you on the screen. For procedural purposes, can I actually ask councillor Reed if he could just confirm that he was happy to accept the incorporations as the second of the motion?
Absolutely, yes. Very happy to accept that.
Thank you, councillor Reed. We have a first amendment by councillor Lane, seconded by councillor McCall, which has been circulated to you and is headed up SNP group. We did have a second amendment by councillor Peter Barrett and Liz Barrett. That has been withdrawn. So the second amendment that we now have is an amendment by councillor McDade, seconded by councillor Brock, headed up independent and Scottish Labour Group. In terms of standing orders, the second amendment will now be put against the first amendment. Change my sheet. So councillor Barnacle has a point of order.
Sorry, Scott. And it's just for clarity, really, before we go any further. If I vote for one amendment in the first process, does that prohibit me from voting when the winning amendment goes against the motion?
No, all councillors are free to vote anyway when we're dealing with the amendments, and including when we get to the final amendment against the motion. So all councillors can vote on each part of dealing with the amendments.
Thank you for that clarification.
So I may proceed to ask members to confirm whether they're voting for the second amendment by councillor McDade or the first amendment by councillor Lane. Councillor Ahern.
Abstain.
Councillor Bailey.
Second amendment.
Deputy Provost Beard.
Abstain.
Councillor Barnacle.
Second amendment.
Councillor Liz Barrett.
Abstain.
Councillor Peter Barrett.
Abstain.
Councillor Braun. Councillor Braun. Thank you, councillor Braun. I see that you've posted in the chat to confirm that you're abstaining. Councillor Brock.
Second amendment.
Councillor Audrey Coates.
You'll be next, Harry. Oh, did you get that?
No, could you repeat it, please, councillor Coates?
Abstain.
Thank you. Councillor Harry Coates.
Abstain.
Councillor Donaldson.
First amendment.
Councillor Drysdale.
First amendment.
Councillor Duff.
Abstain.
Councillor Forbes.
Abstain.
Councillor Gray.
First amendment.
Councillor Illingworth.
Abstain.
Councillor James.
Abstain.
Councillor Jarvis.
Abstain.
Councillor Lane.
First amendment.
Councillor Lyle.
Abstain.
Councillor Massey.
First amendment.
Councillor McCall.
Abstain.
Councillor McCall.
First amendment.
Councillor McDade.
Second amendment.
Councillor McEwan.
First amendment.
Provost.
Abstain.
Provost, can you just confirm you're abstaining?
Abstain.
Thank you. councillor Parrott.
First amendment.
Councillor Culver.
First amendment.
Abstain. I think you said my name's Scott. Sorry, I can't hear.
It's a bit background noise. Councillor Purvis, you're abstaining?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Ribick.
First amendment.
Councillor Reed.
Abstain.
Councillor Robertson.
Abstain.
Councillor Sarwar.
First amendment.
Councillor Shires.
Abstain.
Councillor Simpson.
Abstain.
Councillor Stewart.
Abstain.
Councillor Waters.
First amendment.
Councillor Williamson.
First amendment.
And councillor Wilson.
Abstain.
Deputy Provost, there are four votes for the second amendment, 13 votes for the first amendment, and 22 abstentions, so the first amendment is carried. The first amendment now becomes the substantive amendment. So can I now ask councillors to confirm whether they're voting for the motion by councillor Lyle or the amendment by councillor Lane? Councillor Ahern.
Motion.
Councillor Bailey.
Abstain.
Deputy Provost Beard.
Motion.
Councillor Barnacle.
Motion.
Councillor Liz Barrett.
Motion.
Councillor Peter Barrett.
Motion.
Councillor Braun.
Motion.
Councillor Brock.
Motion.
Councillor Audrey Coates.
Same every time. Oh, that's pathetic.
Did you hear that, Scott? Motion.
Thank you, councillor Coates. Councillor Harry Coates.
Motion.
Councillor Donaldson.
Amendment.
Councillor Drysdale?
Amendment.
Councillor Duff?
Motion.
Councillor Forbes?
Motion.
Councillor Gray?
Amendment.
Councillor Illingworth?
Motion.
Councillor James?
Motion.
Councillor Jarvis?
Motion.
Councillor Lee?
Amendment.
Councillor Lyle?
Motion.
Councillor Massey?
Amendment.
Councillor McColl?
Motion.
Councillor McColl?
Amendment.
Councillor McDade?
Motion.
Councillor McEwen?
Amendment.
Provost?
Motion.
Councillor Parrott?
Amendment.
Councillor Culver?
Amendment.
Councillor Provost?
Motion.
Councillor Ribbeck?
Amendment.
Councillor Reed?
Motion.
Councillor Robertson?
Motion.
Councillor Sarwar?
Amendment.
Councillor Shires?
Motion.
Councillor Simpson?
Motion.
Councillor Stewart?
Motion.
Councillor Waters?
Amendment.
Councillor Williamson?
Amendment.
And councillor Wilson?
Motion.
Deputy Provost, there are 25 votes for the motion, 13 votes for the amendment with one abstention, so the motion is therefore carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillors. I will now just turn you back to the Provost for the remainder of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy Provost. Now we move on to item four, reserves strategy. The report to be considered by the council is report 2134 by Stuart Mackenzie, head of finance. Stuart?
Thank you, Provost. I will be brief. The reserves strategy report sets out the conditions for the managed use or earmarking of the council's reserves in accordance with previous approved policy decisions and in the context of the financial risks facing the council. The projected general fund balance at the 31st of March 2021 is approximately 42.7 million pounds. And this will be updated through the preparation of the council's statutory accounts. The policy advice remains, sorry, the policy advice to maintain uncommitted reserves in the range of 2% to 4% of the council's net revenue budget remains unchanged. COVID-19 has, however, given rise to an unprecedented level of financial uncertainty for the council. It is therefore recommended as a temporary measure to maintain uncommitted reserves at 2%, approximately 7.7 million pounds, and earmark any resources over and above this level for COVID-19 to support the council's response. Thank you, Provost.
Thank you, Stuart. Can I ask whether there are any points of clarification on the report? No points? Sorry, we've got councillor Donaldson who wants to comment. I will be coming out to comment shortly.
It's actually a question, sorry, I should have typed it in queue. It's just very briefly, throughout the report, it states these resources will be monitored as part of the revenue monitoring process and reported to the Strategic Policy and Resources Committee. Could I just ask, because there's no scheduled meeting of that committee prior to the end of June, just how finance officers intend to update all councillors on the monitoring process, especially given that we have a COVID reserve and that's going to be, you know, is going to be a fast changing circumstances. So that we are kept constantly up to date on this. Okay?
Okay, thank you for that. Take it, there is no more questions? No.
Yes, Provost, I put a request in for one question.
Yeah, councillor Barnacle.
Provost, may I address councillor Donaldson's question, please?
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you, Provost, and thank you councillor Donaldson for your question. So councillor Donaldson, normally what we would do is we would undertake the completion of the council's statutory accounts. So the last, the next, should I say, round of monitoring on the council's financial position in the current year will be at the council meeting on the 31st of March. After that, we would undertake the preparation of the council's statutory accounts, that has a significant bearing on the council's reserves position. And we can actually place some of these estimates of some actuals. And then we would seek to report at the earliest opportunity, normally after the recess, later in the summer of this year. And we would continue to monitor on the same basis. Whether that is reporting to council or reporting to SPNR will be determined by council decision on committees going forward.
So any, could I just then, Stuart, ask further, any updates after 31st of March? And we have three full council meetings between now and the end of June. There won't then, you're saying, be any update on the reserves position thereafter, after 31st of March until the end of June? And I'm thinking in particular with the changes in funding, what was agreed in the Scottish, you know, Scottish Parliament over the last two days, and also the drawdown on the COVID fund, that you're saying we won't know now until probably July, August? That is just so that these councillors can keep on top of things.
Thank you, councillor Donaldson. So to clarify, I'll provide an update on the funding position to council at the end of March for the next financial year to keep councillors apprised of the situation. If anything, significant changes, obviously I'd be reporting upon that. But normally what we would be doing is closing the statutory accounts, that allows us to update the reserves position and then report accordingly once that position is known. And actually in closing the statutory accounts, we also have to, should I say, we have to update our financial system. So that takes a little bit of time in terms of the monitoring position as well. So that's just the normal process we would go through. But we'd seek to provide council, and I can assure you, we will provide council with regular updates on the financial position for the course of next financial year, as we have done for the course of this financial year.
So any material changes in circumstances will be made aware of as soon as practically possible.
Indeed.
Okay, councillor Barnacle, you have a question?
Thanks, Provost. Yeah, it's probably obvious, but I'm just seeking clarity. We just passed the administration's budget with adjustments that are funded from the COVID earmarked reserve. So I'm just seeking clarity on paragraphs 211 and 212. What we're doing here is we're maintaining reserves at 2%, but there will be a change presumably as a result of today's revenue debate to the COVID-19 earmarked reserve that's left. Is that correct, Stuart?
Stuart?
Thank you, councillor Barnacle, for your question. Apologies, I misplaced my mouse for a second, so I was unable to mute myself. Absolutely correct, councillor Barnacle. We'll update the position for the decisions taken by council.
Okay, thank you very much. There are no more questions. Can I ask councillor Lyle to move the motion?
Yep. Thank you, Provost. As I have consistently demonstrated, the council and this administration in particular have developed a growing reputation for prudent and sound financial management. The annual reserve strategy before the council today reinforces this position. Everyone in this chamber recognizes the importance of holding sufficient reserves as a contingency for unexpected events and emergencies. The flooding that took place last August and the snow in January provide a timely reminder to all of why reserves are so important. All elected members also understand that reserves must be used on a sustainable basis and cannot be used to balance the budget. Reserves can only be used once and when they are gone, they are gone. The head of finance sets out a range of uncommitted reserves of between 2 and 4% of the net revenue budget. This year's reserve strategy proposes that our earmarked reserves are in excess of 2% our earmarked for COVID-19. This a temporary proposal in recognition of the future impact of COVID-19 on the council's finances. The administration's budget proposals today will result in unearmarked reserves at over 2%, which remains our sensible prudent approach to financial management. I'm happy to move the paper. Thank you, Provost.
Thank you, councillor Lyle. Councillor Duff, second the motion?
Thank you, Provost, yes. And thanks for, to Mr Mackenzie for the report, just happy to formally second, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any amendments? Are there any comments? No comments? Can we agree the report?
Agreed.
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 Before you all go, I would just like to say a big thank you to everyone who have worked so hard today in making sure that this important meeting was able to continue. There was a point several times where we thought we weren't going to have the meeting. So can you please, Pardot, make sure everybody is thanked? Because I'm sure everybody here in the council are very grateful, as we are to all our officers and staff as well. Thank you very much.
Well said, Provost.